Yeah.
Come on.
Okay, board commits.
To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Schools Board Team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. In this past, earlier this month, we would like to pause for a moment of silence to honor Harden County Schools Bus Driver Pam Wolford. She had driven a bus in our district for more than thirty years. And I'm sure that her family and friends and people at the bus garage also will miss her dearly, so let's just have a moment of silence for, to remember Pam. Okay, thank you all. And next is recognitions, and John Wright will take care of that, I believe.
Yes, sir. We have two resolutions tonight, Mr. Chairman. We're going to recognize some students from Lakewood Elementary, then our traditional HCS Stronger Together Awards. So if you'll pass those, sir, we'll get those started.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the student and staff recognitions and HCS Stronger Together. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're going to bring up the last person on your list first because he has to go and go back to work, and you'll see while here in a second. Sean Shear, if you're, Shear, if you're here, come on up, Sean. Sean has to go back to work to fix a down power, power line pole, so that's why we've got to get him out of here, but go on up, Sean. Sean is a Nolan RECC Senior Line Technician. He's been integral in several missions throughout the district. Sean has assisted athletic teams at our high schools by sharing his Nolan RECC bucket truck, which he had permission to do, by the way. He has hung nets for the baseball and softball teams and the golf teams at North Harden. He has crew, has assisted in the hanging of banner that encourages Rodneyville Elementary School students to do well on their state assessment each year. He has most recently provided aid to the team at James T. Alton Middle School in digging a large hole for their bell of success. The bell will be used to celebrate student accomplishments throughout the year. So, Mr. Shear, we appreciate you and your stewardship. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Be careful and be safe tonight.
Don't be a player.
All right, so next, so now we're going to skip back to our student recognitions. Ms. Emma French is here, I think. Ms. Emma, are you here? All right, this is Emma. Come on up, Emma. Emma is, Emma is a first grader at Lakewood Elementary School. She won first place in 3D art in the K through second grade division of the Kentucky Art Education Awards. Congratulations. Thank you, Emma. Appreciate it. Ms. Kaylee Holman, come on up here, Kaylee. Saw Kaylee. Kaylee is, Kaylee's a fifth grader at Lakewood Elementary School. She won second place in 3D art in the third through fifth grade division at the Kentucky Art Education Awards. And Kaylee Gamblin. This is Kaylee. She's a second grader at Lakewood. She won third place in 2D art and the K through second grade division at the Kentucky Art Education Awards. And their parents, are their parents, parents stand up, and the board likes to recognize you as well and give you a round of applause. So, parents of these students, stand up and wave and say hello. All right, thank you so much. All right, next, we'd like to recognize some students from G.C. Burkitt Elementary School for our Stronger, HCS Stronger Together Awards. And Ms. Claire Taylor, I know Claire is here. Come on up, Claire. Claire is a fifth grader at G.C. Burkitt Elementary School. Always takes initiative with students who may need help. One specific example is when a new student enrolled into Claire's homeroom. Claire knew the student was unaware of the color codes for folders and notebooks for each subject area, so she stepped in to help. Without being asked, she helped the student label and organize all of his class supplies. This is just one example of her helpfulness. She's always eager and willing to show new students ropes and has demonstrated many leadership skills through assisting others. Thank you, Claire. Appreciate it.
If I can get familiar with the way you talk, I need your permission to help.
Come on back up here, Claire, get your plaque. All right. Thanks, Claire. All right. Got you. All right, thank you, Claire. Is Logan Tillie here? Is Logan here?
He's out of town.
He's out of town. All right, good deal. And also Gavin Petty. Come on up, Gavin. Gavin is a fifth grade student, another fifth grade student at G.C. Burkitt. He provides regular assistance to his principal, Mr. Bender, who is here, and with various duties in the cafeteria. He also helps a student who has special needs regularly and has become friends with that student. He has left an everlasting impact on that student, as well as the others who see him work each day in the cafeteria. His leadership skills are impeccable, and he works until the task is complete. Thank you, Gavin. Appreciate you. And several, and their parents are here, so if you're a parent of the, any of the folks we just recognized, please stand up. And, and Mr. Chairman, several of the G.C. Burkitt staff are here. The fifth grade team is here. I know Ms. Richardson, Ms. Berthold are here. Is there anybody else? Mr. Bender? Any other G.C. Burkitt staff here? So, thank you for making your impact on those students as well. Yes, ma'am.
John, the young man that wasn't here, are you going to bring him back?
Uh, we can. Absolutely.
Tell us about him.
Yeah, we can tell us, yes, absolutely. We can tell about him. As a matter of fact, I remember now, he told me he wasn't going to be here. Anyway, Logan is a fifth grade G.C. Burkitt Elementary School student, and he demonstrates above and beyond leadership skills. One morning, Ms. Berthold, who was here, was assisting another student when the bell rang and when she entered the room, Logan had taken, taken his own attendance, his mock attendance, to help Ms. Berthold out, because he knew, he knew that it needed to be done. He is often the student that tries to settle the class down when they are excited and get students back on track. He also encourages others to do the right thing. Logan is consistent in providing help to a student in his math class that has some obstacles. Logan also serves as a leader on safety patrol and strives to do his best in all areas. So, thank you to Logan. Let's give Logan a hand. All right, and we'll give him his plaque. I do remember now that he could be here tonight. So, next, in our Stronger Together Awards, our staff, HCS Stronger Together Award goes to our school psychologist. So, you folks, come on up here, our school psychologist. And so, coming up tonight, come on up, ladies. Ms. Kim Atkins, our Director of Special Education, is here. Come on up, Kim, if you're not coming. With us tonight, too, are Savannah Harley, Jennifer Hutchison, Laura McReynolds, Stacy McCune is also here. Did I leave anybody out? No?
Yes. Lauren Offs.
Lauren, okay, Lauren, okay. So, yes, I see your name now. But anyway, let me read a little bit about why we're honoring these folks. They continue to work for the well-being of all of the district's students. National School Psychology Awareness Week was last week, and so we thought we'd take advantage of the opportunity to present this award to the sixteen school psychologists in our district. As more of a focus is put on student and youth mental health, our school psychologists continue to flourish in helping our students maintain high expectations in and out of the classroom. This year, School Psychology Awareness Week theme was Find Your Focus. The HCS school psychologists help students see their ideas more clearly, identify their interests, help them set goals, identify action steps, communicate needs, and engage in discussions that lead to meaningful relationships. They also help our students and fellow staff deal with tragedy and help all involved overcome those obstacles. So, we truly appreciate what you do for our students and our staff. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Don. All right. We're down to focus on academics, and Mr. Sutton, you have anything to?
I do not. We have a special guest tonight.
Yes. Actually, I'm going to ask Ms. Lynette Kennedy to come up. And Ms. Kennedy is our liaison for our homeless students in the district, and so I have asked her to come and present about the work that she's doing, and hopefully you'll see the necessity of why we thought it necessary to hire this position.
My name is Lynette Kennedy, and I'm the Homeless Outreach Liaison. And, John, you can go ahead. And my primary focus is providing intervention for our homeless eighteen-year-old students and providing intervention for our families that have students who are under the age of eighteen, working with the parents and working with the students. When I say working with the parents, that's working with the parents on providing any type of support that they need to overcome those barriers that caused the homelessness in the beginning. And working with the students, we're encouraging them, they need to go to school to be able to break that generational cycle that they're going through right now. The special, specializing in housing only, so that's my specialty. Next. A homeless student in Harden County Schools, either they're in a shelter, they're in a hotel or campground, they're in a car, park, or abandoned building, they're doubled up due to the loss of housing or economic hardship. Now, you've found a lot of families who are doubled up because they choose to, but that's not the families that we're counting in this count that we do. So, remember that. And then also, and turn it back, that's also underneath the guidelines for the McKinney-Vento Act. And then I also want to add that we also have a lot of families who are living in substandard housing. So, when you look at substandard housing, you're talking about infested with roaches, infested with bugs, bedbugs, infested with any type of leaking. The plumbing doesn't work, the heating and cooling systems don't work, mold, slumlord. So, I mean, we have a lot of that going on, so they're living in those situations as well, even though the McKinney-Vento Act doesn't identify them, because that could kind of be underneath abandoned building, maybe, but it's really not abandoned, but, you know, they are paying rent to stay there. Okay? So, what does it look like for us right now? For Harden County Schools, for the 2018-2019 school year, we started on March the eighth, that's the day that we started the program. That was day one of my employment. I was handed seven referrals on that day. On that day, four of those were eighteen-year-olds that were homeless in our school systems at that time. Today, at that, for the school year, we had twenty-nine referrals, sixty school-age students were impacted, four were eighteen-year-olds, and they're included in that sixty count, and six are non-school-age students. So, those are students who are siblings of somebody that don't go to school. And that's what we had. That's for the 2018-19 school year.
Are the non-school-age, is that below? Is that like babies?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, what happened? So, you're wondering, like, what happened with those families? What did we do? So, we assisted eleven of those families. Eight out of eleven of those families are stable as of today. Two are struggling, but they're still in their housing, so that's good, and one has been evicted. So, we would like to report that we have a hundred percent, but as of Monday, the landlord did call and one was evicted. So, so far for this school year, for July first through yesterday, we've had thirty-three referrals already this year. Seventy-four school-age children are impacted by this. Three students who are eighteen, and they're included in that count, and we had three non-school-age kids. So, that's what we're working with right now. So, what's going on with them so far? Twelve families, we have assisted with housing, so that's thirty children so far this year have in place, have a place to call home. Fifteen of them are doubled up or in a hotel, they're basically like in a work in progress in a pending status right now. And four of them, either we're uncertain about them, we no longer have a crisis, or they have moved, and two of them, we actually sent over to East Town Independent School District. So, when we say, what did we do for them? We, we helped the families with food, household items, furniture, hotel, rental assistance, and deposit for utilities. And let me explain how this kind of works. When you're talking about what do we need to be able to help with food, if that family took everything they had to relocate, now, guess what they don't have money for? Food. They don't even have money to buy the basic items. If they took all their money to relocate, to pay their deposit, to pay their rent, now they don't have money for household items, such as trash cans, toilet paper, bar soap, the necessity things that we take for granted, they don't even have those basic items. Furniture, they could, they come from homeless, so they have absolutely nothing. Hotels, if they needed to stay in a hotel, we could assist with that. Rental assistance and deposit for utilities. Some people will have a house, and they'll be able to pay the rent and the deposit, but they can't get the utilities turned on, so we're able to assist with that. What is our process? So, what happens is, it comes in, referral comes into the office, it either comes from the Family Resource Coordinators, a church, a community. A lot of people kind of have got to the point where they self-refer themselves. We determine the urgent need, the first thing we determine is the urgent need that would keep the child safe and in the classroom learning. So, that's our main thing. We want to see, is this child safe, and are we able to keep this kid in the classroom learning? So, we have a program called the First Forty-eight Hours. We determine, make that determination, what's going on. We determine if they need to go to a hotel, if they need to be doubled up, or they can go to a shelter. And then at that point, we work with the Transportation Department to provide transportation for the kid to get in school, because remember, that's our main focus that while we're doing this. Then our process continues. We do a, we complete a referral, and on that referral, I just kind of want to go over a couple of things that we are asking them on the referral. Of course, we get the student's name and what school and stuff they attend, what their current address, how long they've been at their current address, if they, how long they have been at their current address, what was their previous address before that, and how long they have been there. We ask them what happened, we talk to the parents, what happened that caused this crisis to happen? How many people are in a household? Do they have any type of pets? Have they contacted their Family Resource Coordinator? So, if the referral did not come through the Family Resource Department, referring them back to there to see if, to have them contact them. Do they currently have an open CPS case? Have they ever had any type of evictions? What is their current source of income? Do they have a bank account? Do they have transportation? Are there any drug and alcohol concerns that we should be concerned about? What is their past employment? Are they a veteran? It's very important, because there's different agencies that can help with that. Do they attend a church in this area? Because that's, you know, we, we're reaching out to the churches for support, so do you already attend a church here in this area? Do you have any family in this area, and what resources have you already used? Meaning, have you already burnt bridges, or have you already went out and solicited funding for your own self? And have you ever been in a crisis before? So, we ask all these different realm of questions in the referral process. And then after that, we gather all the documents, and this includes the parents' identification and, and income verification. Now, we're probably saying, well, why do we get the parents' identification? Because you've got to think about, we only know the student. We just, we didn't get anything on that parent when they walked in the door. We don't know who this parent is, you know, if they have any active, you know, law business, anything could be going on with this parent. We don't know that. So, we don't even know who's in the office, whose home we're going to when we're doing these home visits. So, it's best that we go ahead and get identification on the parents and anybody over the age of eighteen that lives in that household. And then we get the income verification, because if my specialty is housing, how am I going to do housing if we don't have an income coming in? Where we get the income from, and did anybody verify that income? So, that's what we're doing there. And then, the work begins on how we can assist on a hand-up approach and not a hand-out approach.
Does it, does it make a difference if there were immigrants?
I haven't got to that part. I mean, I, I haven't even got there.
Oh.
Like, I haven't ran into any, so, I mean, I wouldn't know that part. I don't know.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so, you know, you have this program, you know, that focuses on housing, so it's going to come with some challenges. What are our challenges? Funding? You know, where are we going to get the funding for, for this program? We did initiate a Hats for Homeless fundraiser for the fall, and we did, we had each student wear a hat, their favorite hat to school, for the day, and they paid a dollar, so we were able to raise some funding like that. We do have several churches in our community who have committed to giving a thousand dollars for the school year, because we don't want to over, overextend, because the schools are always asking for something, so they just give a thousand dollars designated to the homeless program, and we do have some businesses that do help with that. Another thing that we need is mentors for the families and students. Transportation is a huge barrier, because if you know, we don't have transportation here in Harden County, so that's a huge barrier for the families. And training, the training needs to be more specialized training, not just a generic training. They do go through the United Way Financial Trainings, and they do go through the Bankon Trainings, they go through different financial trainings and different relationship trainings, but they also want to need more specialized training that's just honing in on the needs and stuff that they have for their crisis. And then just community involvement, just making awareness that we do have the homeless students in our community. They're not out there holding the signs, they're in our classrooms, and so we just want to make sure that we get the community involved in this process. And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Very good.
Wow, that's impressive work.
Thank you. I don't do it alone, but thank you.
Kids can't learn if they can't have the resources we have.
And their basic needs. That goes back down to Maslow's hierarchy of needs. It goes back down to that, too. And then how does the families find out about this? Inside of the schools, each school has these posters inside, so you will see these posters posted up throughout the schools, and that's how they find out about the program as well.
I have a question. Is this the level of need you thought you'd find, or you just didn't have an expectation?
Um, I didn't have an expectation. Ms. Morgan may have had an expectation. Did you have an expectation of what you would find?
Yes and no. I think the biggest surprise for me was, we knew we would have housing insecurities, but we have a lot of students, you notice, Ms. Kennedy kept pointing out the eighteen-year-olds. So, once they get to that level, the parents are like, I am no longer obligated to take care of you, but yet they're still in school and they still need assistance, and they don't have a way to go from, you know, just because you turn eighteen and the society says you're an adult, it doesn't mean you have the skills, when you're still enrolled in a high school, to go out and fend for yourself. So, that's been an awakening.
I know how you do that.
Right.
I suspect we're just scratching the surface.
Absolutely. So, but we have had many churches, I know John has put on Facebook some of the groups that have come in and made donations, so it's been widely used, and so.
Really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. And then I'll add one last thing, you know, a lot of people ask, well, is it more the north-end schools or the south-end schools? And so far, it has been every school in the district has been impacted by this program. So, it wasn't like it's just, no school didn't have a homeless person. Every school so far, in the nine months we've been doing the project, that every school has had a homeless person.
Can you talk just a little bit, because this is, this is a sensitive subject, too, so talk a little bit about maybe, and I'm putting you on the spot, keeping confidentiality, obviously, is important, but also pulling in key members, staff, or people that might support while there. How do you do that? How do you, how do you work that issue?
Um, you know, like when, just like I said, we work very closely with the Family Resource Coordinators, so I work very closely with them, so we follow those confidentiality guidelines. So, what they do is, I mean, we go to the churches, we don't tell, like, if we have to solicit funding, we don't talk about a name, we just talk about a situation. We say, we have a family that's doing this. We don't have to do as much of that, because we already went to the churches and just presented the program, and that's what we would like to do, be able to go to the community and just present the program, just like what I did today, just present the program and say, could you make an agreement to pledge this amount of money? And then we don't have to go out and tell each individual story every time the crisis happened, because then they're going to be like, oh, Lord, again, you know what I'm saying? You have this again. Because, so we haven't had to do that so much this year, but last school year, we did have to do that a lot, and that's what we did. We just went out there, explained the situation, and just asked different churches, and not putting it on one church. So, like, if we needed three hundred dollars, we may ask five different churches. Does that make sense? For sixty dollars each, instead of just like going to one different church and saying, can we have three hundred dollars? So, just looking at that, that's what we, that's what we've been able to do. And then go to organizations and looking at writing grants for that, too, as well, so we don't have to solicit so much money.
So, like, if I was a mentor, obviously confidentiality would be important for me, too, but do we go through, like, a volunteer program? Do we have some kind of access? How does somebody become a mentor for her and, and work through you?
And that's what we would go through, you would go through the volunteer for, through the schools.
Thank you.
And then we would pair you up with, because the mentors are more going to be, just like you said, for the students at the schools.
Yep.
You know, so they work with the students at the schools.
I got you.
Have you found that opioids are a factor in this problem?
So far, no, but we do have two families that, from the previous one, that are in drug court, so they did have some drug addictions and things that they had to deal with, but they are clean. They've been clean for like anywhere, everybody's been clean for like six months to a year, so they are working on that. So, yes, but it is out there. The drug, the drug abuse is something that we definitely need to be.
I wonder how they have it is.
Yes, yes. But so far, we only have the two.
And I think that brought up another point for me, too, is the accountability piece there is real important for you, because you want to make sure that they're accountable and making sure they're taking care of the things that you give them to be accountable for. So, I'm sure you're watching that as well.
Yes, and that, and then that part, what we do is, I have, well, of course, myself and the Family Resource Coordinators work hand-in-hand with that, but I also do a once-a-month phone call or text or communication with the family and just say, hey, you know, did your rent get paid? What's going on with this? How is, how are the kids doing at school? Looking at their attendance, all of those different things we put in play. We got like ten, a ten-item checklist that we're using to follow up with those students just to, and then those families, just to make sure that they're following through.
Which helps them get stronger as well.
Yes, and they really like that. They get, they're excited to say some good news has happened, or this has happened, now they got a car and they didn't have a car, and now they have a job, and they've been on their job for a few months, so yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you. Okay, recognition of visitors. John Wright, no one signed up? Okay. Next is construction updates. We had our noon meeting and advised of the construction processes that's going on. Looks like everything's on the move. We also had a steering committee meeting for Central Harden renovations, or whatever else we might decide over there. But, anyway, I think, John, you want to add anything?
I think you've covered it.
We, we pretty much heard it all today, but we'd be glad to discuss any of it with anyone that would want to hear any more of it. We're trying to get back on schedule with the schools, but.
You, you might say something about the drone video we had.
Yeah, they, they had a drone video, I think that was like the nineteenth or so of October, which is a little behind, but it's, it's pretty neat, flew over the sites and turned those things to where we could just about see any part of it, even, I noticed cars and trucks going down highways. And you could see what superintendent was working and which one was standing around and just a whole nine yards. It was quite interesting. But, and, and like I said, you know, it's close to a month behind. We've got almost another month's work in, but it's hard to have something done today out there and show us today of what it looks like. We are making progress, they're starting the second floor Lincoln Trail, and, and I think they said most of the floors will be poured by the end of this week, providing, we don't get too much more rain, which that's tomorrow, at East Harden. And, so, we're still, we're still spending taxpayers' money, as a few people says in the paper quite frequently, and I guess we will continue to do that. And tax bills are due the end of this month. So, y'all pay on time, you get a little discount.
That's true.
I'm just trying to get mine to pay. Consent agenda. We are approving some more travels. Central Harden, Jero TC's going to Port Wayne and approval of the Family Resource and Youth Service Centers District Assurance Certification for the physical years twenty-one and twenty-two. That sounds way up there, doesn't it? Financial services, there was quite a few change orders, most of those were somewhat of a washout, but there was, one item got missed on one of the school's architect or the.
Engineer.
Engineering group agreed to pay for half of that with us, so we're picking up the Uh, agreed to pay for half of that with us, so we're picking up the other half. It was, something was missed. Uh, we got a little bit of money back and then we, uh, some, few things we needed in security. So, we went ahead and spent a little more money, so approximately fifteen thousand dollars of money. But it's, while we're under construction is the time to put it in. So, uh, there'll probably be a few more of those. We had a few little credits, but they didn't quite equal the fifteen thousand. So, we spent a little bit more money than we would have. And, and we will continue to find a few of those throughout the process. That's, uh, about the, uh.
That's the bulk of it, really.
Bulk of it.
Did you mention, uh, technology money?
Uh, yeah, that was, what was it?
On C four.
C four.
Or the matching, yeah.
The hundred and fifteen thousand?
Hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, uh, we got for that and we'll match that.
Yes.
So, it's kind of hard to.
Put that to great use.
It's kind of hard not to take a hundred thousand if any way possible you can match it and spend two hundred. That's a pretty good donation, so.
I'm sure it takes more than that to keep us current on technology needs.
Absolutely.
Anyone have anything they want to comment or pull out or?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by the sign a. I oppose. Motion carries. And, uh, we're down to action items. Anyone get anything they need to throw out there that, you know, I think are, if there's no surprises, but we'd be willing to accept one. New business? Anyone have any new business? Superintendent's report.
As you all know, uh, as it is coming up, we have been involved in some surveys. We've asked the community. We asked our schools, our employees. So, we had, uh, several focus groups last school year, so I just want to give you the information, uh, we gleaned from that. Uh, but, and this is going to be used to develop our strategic plan. We are not at that final stage yet. But just wanted to give you a little bit in chunks and then we'll give you the actual strategic plan next month. But as a result of the mul, multiple focus groups, which included our students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members, so thanks to those of you who responded, we had over a thousand, uh, people to participate in this. John, you can go ahead. So, the strengths, as identified through this, uh, focus sessions, were the five highly identified strengths. Were student focus of belief, uh, that students' needs are put first. Dedicated teachers and staff, uh, focus on more than college prep. Uh, again, with our home high schools, offering pathways, but also EC3, offering pathways. Um, if students want to go to college, that is fantastic. However, we also realize there are a lot of jobs, opportunities out there that you may be able to do upon completion of high school. Multiple opportunities for students to learn and be successful. EC3 is as an example of that. But again, our home high schools offer I pathways, uh, business pathways to be included in that. And then strong communication, particularly with One Call. Uh, part of that was the emphasis for us not to overuse One Call. Uh, we talked to our schools last year, if they had multiple, uh, One Call messages in a month, to try to rein those in so that when parents receive the One Call, they actually listen to them. And then, of course, on social media, John does a great job with our Facebook page, our school website. And then we have several schools that have their own Facebook page. Uh, they also use One Call, Snapchat, Twitter, all of those devices, um, which we may not be as familiar with as the students are in this, uh, group. Opportunities for growth and challenges to address. And on this, we, uh, did not narrow it to five. I felt it was important to keep the sixth one on there. But increasing student engagement and ownership and learning, behavior, and accountability. Uh, this was important because, um, as things change in society, uh, we would like for our students to possess self-help skills of what they need to do in certain situations to, uh, better improve their behavior. Self-regulation, uh, was the emphasis on this one. Uh, the next one, ways to address incre, increasing student mental health challenges and behavior awareness and assistance. Um, I think most of us would agree, this is a reflection of society as a whole. As we see the homeless population gaining, a United Way would also tell you that forty percent of able-bodied people in Hardin County are not working. And they contribute a lot of this to mental health challenges. And we also see this in our schools. And this was identified by everyone in the community as well. Uh, one for us is employee retention, engagement, and recognition. Uh, we want to hire the best. We want to keep the best. And the way you do that is to make sure they're engaged and recognized for the hard work that they're doing. Uh, helping parents to be more engaged and involved in their students' learning and school activities. Uh, just having one parent in a home who can ask about the report card, check on, uh, how well they're doing in school will make a significant difference in a child's life. And if we have, Mr. Sutton was sharing with me today, that we have a student who goes home each day. A parent is working, uh, second shift. And so, they truly never see one another except for maybe five to ten minutes in the mornings. And so, we will try to find a mentor for that student so that they are having a little more adult guidance. Increasing consistency of messaging between schools. Uh, we had a meeting just this past week with all of our high schools, with, uh, counselors and a few teachers to say, what are we offering at each of our high schools? And we want to make sure we're terming it the same thing with the transient, uh, student population we have within our school district. Uh, this is really important for us to, if we're offering honors English at North, we should also be offering honors English at, uh, John and Central. And then our middle schools, Ms., uh, Brittany Nickel was sharing with me, uh, the need to make sure consistent discipline is, uh, consistent from one high, uh, middle school to the next. So, those are all things we will be working on. And then the last one is more efficient use of resources for identified priorities as well as heightened efficiency. So, within our district, uh, we met just this week to go over processes and procedures. Um, we have a group of people within our central office and our different departments who are all at the age of, I would say, in five years, could retire. And with that goes out a lot of knowledge. So, we want to make sure we have processes in place, that we are cross-training and that, uh, we know exactly the steps they take in processing an employee, um, processing any, a retiring person, uh, that we have all of that down. So, that is, again, another challenge that we face. Most important things students should know and do upon graduation. This life skills, you notice this is only one, uh, but you will notice there are multiple, uh, parts to this. Notice the one that says, face-to-face, written communication using more than social media. Actually being able to have a conversation with the person sitting across the table with you. I challenge anyone to go out to a restaurant and notice how quiet the atmosphere is. Because instead of talking to the person across the table, you are texting or checking your phone rather than spending time with the person right there in front of you. Uh, also, work well with others. Problem solve. Uh, communicate effectively. You also, I want to point out one, uh, under life skills is understanding personal finances. We just talked about homelessness and this is one of the things, uh, not having the life skills of personal finances. You will, uh, on Monday evening, everyone is invited to the Central Kentucky Community Foundation building. Uh, we will be, uh, receiving, uh, a huge, um, not sure how much I'm supposed to give away, John. Uh, we will be receiving a very nice donation from a community member who, uh, really sees the need for the financial literacy, uh, being offered to our students. So, that will be happening on Monday. Uh, the next one, have a work ethic. Be self-motivated. Um, again, with forty percent of able-bodied folks not working in Hardin County, that's a huge concern for us. So, if we can start that all the way through kindergarten to fifth grade, we will have a work ethic, uh, program for those students and a capstone for those students to finish. And then again, at eighth grade, and then, of course, we have the work ethic certification, uh, going strong at our high schools. And then, of course, uh, for our primary grades, basic skills of reading, writing, and math. If we can get them on grade level by the end of third grade, we know they will be much more successful. Uh, not only on grade level then, but third, fifth, eighth, and then seniors in high school. Our key values. What should, uh, be our focus? Uh, need to be caring and supportive, show respect, safe both physically and emotionally, uh, ensuring student success, and then the community. Um, our community, I cannot say enough about, uh, just like Ms. Kennedy spoke about, going out to different groups. The rotor, Rotarians, uh, the, um, churches, the civic organizations we have. We are just very blessed to be in the community that we have here. And then key measures of success. Increasing graduate rate with students being transition-ready. We just don't simply want to set a ninety-nine percent graduation rate. We want to continue, continue to see that increase. And then increasing enrollment for two- and four-year colleges, military or direct-to-trade or work. All of those, we would be very satisfied with. And then stronger measures of parent involvement. Those are the things we're going to be, uh, monitoring, um, as we go through this process. And all of these will fall into four pillars when we present our strategic plan, which is our students, our people, our parents and partners, and then our processes and procedures of how we are going to work as a district and how we will conduct business. And that is it. So, you can go back up, John. We will, uh, be working on those. Just wanted to give you this part of it. And then next month, we will be presenting you with the actions and goals that will go along with what was, uh, given to us, uh, from the community and the people within our school districts.
So, here, now, think about an eighteen-year-old that's got four more months of school with no family, on his own. It's, it's almost impossible, you know. How can a kid make it? He's got to have somebody out there helping. That's tough.
Takes one.
And of course, the kids in foster care, that terminates at age eighteen, doesn't it?
Yeah, they age out.
Yeah? So, it, uh, you know, if he's an eighteen-year-old, in January, he's got a hard road to go.
Um, we'll be talking about, um, a position that I would like to recommend, which is a job placement coach who can start helping those students immediately in living wage jobs. Yes. So, thank you all. That's all I have.
Executive session, now, we don't need an executive session. Board calendar, uh, November twenty-seventh, school dismissed. Uh, Thanksgiving Day, even the central offices closed.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, November twenty-ninth, office is closed. And December nineteenth, we'll be back here for another board meeting. And so, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and, uh,
Motion to the jar.
If you know any of those kids out there and you've got too much to, uh, give away, well, give it to somewhere that'll make use.
Absolutely.
Have a motion and a second, there, John, do I?
Say.
Now you do.
Alright, all in favor, signify by the sign a. I oppose. Motion carries. Y'all have a safe trip home. Thanks for staying with us.